Thank you, everybody. Getting online there. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a regular reception of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven oh two P M. in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wenetta Hill. Councilmember Johnny Jo- Joni Giacamino. Councilmember Frank Davis. Mayor Kim Budge. Councilmember Leslie Johns. Councilmember Mel Suie. Mayor Pro Tim. Anna Klein. Stephen J. Pocken, city manager. Nino Williams, deputy city clerk. Carrie Bagley, finance director. Joelle Landers, personnel director. Matthew Gurney, public works director. Logan Dodd, operations manager. Tim Cox, police chief. Jay Ritchie, deputy police chief. Jim Richardson, fire chief. Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you, everybody. See a little bit of a crowd here. Appreciate you all showing up. So tonight, for a moment of silence, we'll have a moment of personal reflection, and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance if we can get everybody to stand for a moment.
My pledge of allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For our business, as we call the public, looks like I have more signed up to speak to the items on the back path situation, so. And Melanie, yours will be with grants, is that right? What number?
No, ten by pass, please.
Oh, ten also, okay. It's a little scribbly.
Down to thirteen.
I could have had your last number was kind of scribbly, but I didn't know. All right. So we're all on tens and elevens and so on, so. Yeah, okay, I'm gonna do that. All right. I wanted to let the public have their first say. So for my announcements tonight, I just want to update everybody on where we are on the Main Street situation. It will be five weeks, I believe, tomorrow night. We have worked diligently, believe it or not, in these five weeks. Seems like one step forward and two steps back, but that's how these things go sometimes. It was the entire intention, of course, of myself and I think the rest of us, that we want to preserve as much as we can of Main Street. We are about historic city, and so that was our goal. We worked towards that goal. We brought in a structural engineer within four days. It took him a little over a week to draw up a plan to try to stabilize what was there. We went through a first contractor that backed out on us. We had to bring in a asbestos specialist who had done testing to see what we were going to deal with in that light. And finally, we've brought in another contractor and also one of the best brick masons companies in Arizona, Tootson, who does nothing but these kinds of restorations. And he basically informed us that that's just too dangerous to do what we're thinking of doing. So as of Monday, I brought everybody back down. We had a big twelve-person meeting there on Main Street and just decided that, that we had to decide that, that we needed to move forward. We'd closed Main Street for too long. Businesses have been out of business, and so. And then agreement, in order to keep the workers safe and the public safe, and for us to be able to get in and actually do the investigation. We have not even been able to determine the cause yet. We're gonna start on Friday. They're gonna start standing up Thursday, and hopefully, I believe, the work will start on Friday. And they will start from the above and bring down those upper brick walls, politeize those, we'll save those on city property, and down to a safe level to where those major walls do not need bracing. Now, doesn't mean that no bracing will happen. Actually, I was hoping maybe we could open both lanes of Main Street, but it seems like we're not, because when all the structural engineers got together and construction people, we now are realizing that the less than lock is now moving to the west, almost four inches since the fire. We're careful that if we do too much through the two burned-out buildings, that we could lose less than. So we're gonna leave part of a wall to help support the less than lock, and we're gonna put a Jersey barrier on half of Main Street and brace it. Why the less than lock people start to build from the bottom and stabilize that corner? That, and that's this is both the front and rear corners. So we don't want to do more damage, but we want to move forward in a, in a, do just the way that we can do what we need to do in order to stabilize the safety of the public and open our, at least one lane of our traffic down. And this should also allow us to open a good portion of Commerce Street. There'll be some construction area in the middle, but parking will come back behind the post office of what we all dearly need more parking. So that basically essentially is the plan, that, that we will, starting Friday, that we'll be working seven days a week through Saturday and Sunday, and start to slowly dismantle the upper walls of those two burned-out buildings, twenty-eight and thirty, Main Street. We will brace the corners of twenty-four Main Street and the less than building. And as soon as the less than building's structural engineer determines that that building is safe, then we can remove that barrier and we'll be completely open, set up a sidewalk on the one side. So we are, we're moving forward as soon as we finally put everything in place. That is where we are right now. You know, we have insurance issues, and we're working with insurance people. We're working with lots of other stuff. We still have asbestos issue that will be happening as this comes down. And, and, but we could have raised the walls and spent a hundred and eighty, fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then in the end, there's no structural strength left among the bricks after all of the, all of the fire that's been, been pinched on them. So they were gonna have to come down. So it seems throwing good money after bad to brace something that's gonna have to come down in the final end. So we're gonna, we'll take it down. First stories are still there, and, and the property owners will deal with that. It's not our, not our doing. But that's what's gonna start happening on Friday, and we're hoping within ten days, we'll have one Main Street road open, we'll have the sidewalk open, and all businesses open that are not directly impinged by the fire. So those four businesses that are now closed, that we've had to keep close for over a month, will be able to reopen, and it will be safe to be sold. Yes.
You might have the contract.
Yeah, so, just so you know, the, 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 basically, we're gonna individually lot, try to recapture money from each individual building, but the overall total is about a hundred. This is just for the remediation, this for, for doing what we're doing is about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We are in probably twenty-plus thousand in, in structural engineering. It'll be a little more of that. And plus, we're buying Jersey barriers and supports, and we're gonna be renting fence. So, yeah, this is not a cheap deal, but that's what the city's for. We have money in reserves, and we will be trying to recapture absolutely as much for the taxpayers as, as possible. I totally have this nice-looking attorney over there with his brown eyes, right? I don't know about the nice-looking part, but he's got brown eyes, right? Yeah, well, no, I, I gave a good, a care of it, Steve. Anyway, so that's where we are, and that's what's gonna be happening. So please, I'm just gonna have anybody that's around here and help anybody here that gave us lots of room, let those construction workers come in, do their job, don't interfere, please stay back, gaze from a distance, and we'll get this done and, and, and get at least one hundred and eighty percent of what we need to get done done. And, and then it's mostly other stuff, and hopefully, the, I know the less than people are working there, starting up on Wednesday to start doing their, their construction also. So, yeah, it's, it's a big deal, and it's very hard, and I'll be honest. It was one of the hardest things I've ever been through as an elected official and had to try to foster and, and, and work with, with the historic nature of it, but also. And if I might just make one quick, I, I spoke into a couple of our really old, I shouldn't say old, but historic contractors, have been around this town for many, many years. And one of them reminded me very well that, yes, they went into the Santiago's building, the one that's right there on the corner, and they went in and completely had to restabilize the inside, and took all the brick down and completely laid it back up. So if you look back in nineteen eighty-six, and I look at the early pictures versus what you see now, and except for a couple of little eyebrow things above a couple of the windows, you can't tell a difference. So I know it can be done. I know that things can be put back, we're gonna save absolutely all the bricks as we can, so they'll happen. So that's my hope, and that's what we'll move forward with that idea from here going forward, because there's just no need to try and throw good money after bad to stabilize something that's gonna have to come down, and, and we'll be tied it for months more on end, so. That's, that's why, it's hardly a nutshell, but that's the way it is. So there is a complaint listing of, of, of a press release that I released. It's on the city website and on our Facebook page. So if anybody's interested, please start to read more about that call. All right, so with that, we'll get onto the call of it later, and we'll just do the first of general business. So we'll go to accounts payable. That motion.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-six cents, subject to availability of funds. Second?
Motion second. We have questions on the council. Okay, go ahead.
On page three, this is for a chief of emergency. There is a, it's under contract services in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventeen, but it says annual support and update. So what's the annual support form?
That's the program we use to enter all of our calls in. It's the program that we submit to APRs for our grant funding and stuff like that. So it's, they help, if we have an issue with the program, they'll, they will, we can go over the phone and they'll walk us through how to fix it, stuff like that. It's our, it's our fire program that we use to enter our daily calls.
Reporting.
It's for your, okay, yeah, reporting. It used to be three years ago, but it's not leaving.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one I have is under, it's still in page three. It's building maintenance, and it's, again, under contact services. And it's, it's not a whole lot, but it's for post office drinking water. We provide drinking water to the post office?
Yes, that was in the contract with the U S Postal Service, because the, in the, the, the tap water is not drinkable. So yes, and it has been, city's been doing that for many years.
Remember, when we went ahead and put filters on all of the, is that something that we can look at again, or?
I could, I could have Matt go and check again, but I don't think with our, our, you know, it's not necessarily the water that's undrinkable. It's the infrastructure through which it passes before it gets to your cup. In other words, the hundred-and-something-year-old pipes and coming through that ancient drinking water system, which, as you know, we've been drinking in place for at least five years now. So I would feel more comfortable for the health and safety of folks who can drink water in the post office if we just keep doing what we're doing.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
I have.
Okay, go ahead.
Page two, legal services, appears on common. Twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-six, just the number that's out of norm.
I needed to replace tires on my vehicle. No, I knew you were gonna ask this question, and I, I wish I.
How do you know I was gonna ask this question? Always.
Yeah, I believe, I'm saying.
You're always psychic? Well, the next question is gonna be tough, so answer this one.
We'll start about in the dollar that that bill was directly related to the fire. So there's, there was a lot of time and expense that went into that, which is kind of a, an example of, you know, budgetary issues, how you can try to budget and foresee bands, and then have issues come up that have substantial costs and impact that are completely unexpected. But yeah, I, I saw that number, and I, I went and double-checked and looked at why it was different from prior months, and that was significant. Part of it was, and I will point out that with the, the, the reduction that we offered when I switched firms, that would have been over fourteen thousand dollars had it, had it been with other ways.
But, but the question I had with this, I went back and reviewed the financials. I mean, it seems like, even though we'll bring this on a bi-weekly basis, so the numbers, but if you look at the yearly basis, we're, we're paying a part-time low for over a hundred thousand dollars a year for part-time, if you add it up. Sometimes, when, when we look at this, we'll break it down bi-weekly, it looks like seven eight thousand. I went back and reviewed last year and up to this year. So far, we are about, with this, you're gonna be about seventy-six thousand, that's eight months into the year. So I'm looking at over hundreds of thousand dollars on a part-time services. This could be a full-time job, what we're paying. So with, we're spending about quarter million dollars.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so just a, a, a comment with regard to that. Budgeted, the budget that you approved for this fiscal year, one budgeted, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the city attorney. Most bills we've had this year have come in way less than ten thousand dollars. And so I feel pretty confident we're not even gonna get to anywhere close to a hundred and twenty by the end of the year. So we're well within our budget, and it is a figure that council has approved at least two years in a row now.
Well, a budgeted, we can say budgeted, but for me, the question is, and we have, because what happened? We have this situation with the fire department, when we have, with the fire, we have, we needed more time. Are we obliged, is it the reason you, you hired a contract, so to be diligent, make sure we're spending what we need? Are we just, say, we're budgeted a hundred and twenty, therefore, we're gonna spend a hundred and twenty? I mean, are we needing, I cannot understand what, in response to what you say, not a fire, and this, no. And I'm not, it's not a personnel view specifically, but the number, the city of our size, by a part-time, and somebody works for a few hours, or I don't know how many hours you put into this, and are the hours needed, we spend in, like, you know, it's like a full-time paid profession. I just, I just wanna bring it up, so we can look at it and study it and make sure that we are being diligent in looking at this number.
I think what we'll find if we look at the last six or seven years of legal services, the city attorney that we had prior to Mr. Estes cost every bit of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year and something.
It was ten thousand a month, was that was his pay? So we're actually.
Okay, so, so, I, I, it's not, I understand, it's not. It's just a number for the size, for our budgeting, it's something what we have to look at. If it's a part-time hourly, are we utilizing this hour? Are we needing all of those services we need? I just wanna make sure to bring it to their attention, so it can be diligent at looking at those numbers. Good, well, you know, it's, it's a big amount to spend. And I don't know if you do a comparative to other cities our size, are they spending that much money too? And I don't wanna go into this.
I can say, yes, if, if not more. I've got other, 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 other cities spending quite a bit more, especially if they have an in-house attorney, because you're not just, you're gonna pay well more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in addition, when you calculate in the, the salary and the F F Es, and everything that goes in with that, with the, all the required C L Es and, and everything that goes into what's required to be an attorney. With that said, when we get into the budget process, one of the benefits of this new firm is that we have a number of clients that are on fixed, fixed rate amounts.
Something we can look at.
We can look at if that's something that the council was interested in and wanting to say, okay, we've got a budget, we can establish that, because typically what happens is you have your fixed rate, and then at the end of the year, you're kind of looking at just, and if it went over, then we adjust, if it went under, we adjust, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you know. I, I, I always let my, my clients know that I am not one of those attorneys that, that looks at a client and says, well, you got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I'm gonna bill out a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I've got clients that budget for more than that, that, you know, because of contingency issues and stuff.
I just wanted to bring that awareness, and I appreciate your answer.
And I can tell you, it is always on my mind when doing work for, for the city, knowing what the budgetary issues are and, and constraints and things are. I try to do everything I can in a, in the most economical way, the quickest way, but also in making sure that we're protecting the city with the, the best legal representation and advice that you guys can, can have and use in making your decisions.
As long as the awareness is there, and, and that's, I just wanted to make sure that's.
Just, just a quick final poll, point of mine is, we're keeping track of all of his expenses, all of our, our public works expenses on this fire. And those will be ones who are gonna be filing against the insurance and other.
And, and, and that's the reason I brought this up, because during a period where we don't, where we will not in need of, of, of these services, and I, I don't know how many of those, it comes to a time where you do need it. So we, we can just say, because we have this, therefore, now we have this big, big issue that we have to deal with, and, and we just wanna make sure that we, we, during the year, when, when we need it, only two hours, you know, we need to be proactive, maybe, you know, some of this stuff can be done by, by Zoom, you know, Zoom meetings and stuff. I, I, I just wanna make sure that this, the, when something like this happened, it teaches us that we have to be, and know we're liable about it, prudent about our expenses, because at times it comes in where we need that funding, and I wanna make sure that we're not just, because we have it, because it's in the budget. I'm sorry, Steve, I cannot accept this because it's in the, in the budget. The budget are made as a guideline, they are not made to, to, to just, because I have it, therefore, I'm gonna spend it. That's the only, the only thing on the city.
And I would, I would just also let you know, one of the things that I do that a lot of my colleagues don't, and you can go back and look at the, the attorney's bills and stuff, I keep very detailed bills, where every item is broken out, down to the tenth of them, and, and the way I do my bills is, at the beginning of each entry, there's a short little explanation, two or three words of what that entry is about. For example, it'll say Main Street Fire, and then it'll have a very detailed one or two sentence explanation as to what that title expense was, so that Steve, so that every, you know, Steve and all the council are entitled to see the, the details of bill. The details aren't publicized, because those are attorney-client privileged information, because I do go into substantial detail as to what was, what was said, what was discussed, different things like that. But you're more than welcome to, to look, because one of the things you can see when, when doing that is you can see the different categories of things as they happen. For example, you know, months ago, you'd probably see a lot of time entries that would say Hillcrest Apartments, and the entries for the different things that we were doing with the Hillcrest and the contracts and different things. So that's how I, I keep track and make sure that, that those are entered in and able to be able to track how the work is done with different areas that's being worked on.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just take one, I, I need to make one comment more for the people listening here tonight, both on Zoom and in the audience tonight, because I want you to know that we, every day, we do everything we can to spend your money as, as best we can. And the evidence of that is the fact that last June, at the end of the last fiscal year, we ended up spending a million dollars less than what we had budgeted. So far this year, through seven, seven months, we have spent more than a half a million dollars less than we have budgeted for the year. So we are very prudent stewards of the taxpayer's money. And I want you to know that Joe is not an exception. He, he gets just as much scrutiny from staff as every other department, every other department head sitting here. So I want you to know that we are, every single day, we are watching after the money.
Okay, Jon.
Did I understand you to say that it's possible that we would recruit attorney money from insurance, or we've got a misunderstanding on my part?
No, you're correct. What we will be looking after, the ones that have insurance, will be filing a claim on everything we're spending to do what we have to do. The non-insurance one, there is some question whether they have something to make, apples or else. There's other ways, which means and so on, that we'll try to, we're gonna try to recapture absolutely as much as we can from the two.
So that potential is also along with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
We have to follow me all the public works people, the amount of money. Only if that counts mine, but of course, three hundred bucks a month, you don't give a buck. No, it's fine. Yeah, no, we're gonna, it's only right. I mean, the, we're doing this for public safety, but ultimately, it's the, it's the fire that, that caused this, and we're gonna try to recapture those, those funds, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so seeing nothing else, we have a motion in a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-six cents. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Naysay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. We'll move on to number two. This is the approval of the consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have approval of two minutes for February twentieth and March fifth. We have three acceptances of resignations, one from the disability, one from police and fire, well, two from police and fire. So if anybody has a desire to be on the police and fire or disability committee, there is openings now. And finally, last one will be a special event liquor license application for the Drunkel Motel for Saturday, April twentieth, from nine A M. to nine P M. Do you have anything that needs to be pulled?
I'd like to pull that, that.
Yep, okay.
Any question?
Who else? Okay, seen them, I'll take a motion for items A through E.
I have to approve the consent agenda, items A through E. Second?
And a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, as listed, items A through E. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Naysay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. We'll move forward on to item F. I'll start with, or which, anyone?
Go ahead. Since this is a residential sort of, I would want to know if we're taking into consideration, we're taking into consideration the parking and the van that will be placed there. I know it's for a liquor license. I actually had some concerns there with, regarding having Victor on the premises there. I know that we passed that before. The music, the mouth.
That is not the voice. Liquor license, of course.
Let's go ahead with, so I guess, was this the only thing that was submitted? Because there were some concerns, other, other than just the liquor license. Was there any kind of other info?
They don't have to have any other, apart from the sale of use permit. One thing to understand is, I look at this, and we was also looking to see if there's some way we can control it. This is, this is going as a C three.
This is, this is known as a C three. This is as commercial as you can get, literally, you can't get any higher, so. I, I know there's some about, about an RV party or whatever, but. Unfortunately, uh, I don't have any zoning issues because they're actually meeting within those zones. Now, what there is, is all we can place and all we can place is our noise ordinance. And so if they dislike, uh, that goes on out at the other brewery out on there, if they cannot meet their, uh, the, 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 the noise, noise ordinance. There can be action taken at that point, but as far as, if we wanna deny and say, well, they can hold this event, but can't drink alcohol. Make them walk across the street to, to Circle K and buy a, a twelve pack and come back and drink it. I guess that's my whole issue is, I don't know if that's really gonna.
I just want a clarification, that's the question.
Because I, and I, I, I have heard too, and so I read it as far as I feel.
Okay, thank you.
More, anyone else to talk about this, it's, yeah, western forests is allowing an absurd alcohol at an event that we have no other thing but laws.
So they are within, um, regulations, the code, et cetera.
In, in liquor.
In the liquor license, okay.
Anyone else? I'll take a motion on F then, if you wants to, or we can die on the line.
I'm going to. I'm going to approve item F. Second.
And a motion and a second to approve item F on the consent agenda as listed. Um, I'll take a roll call on this one, just so everybody had their say, thanks.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Seward.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye.
Passes the answer, so moved. Uh, we are not, we don't have any old business, so let's move right on in the new business. So, item three, yeah. It's like item three will be a discussion of political approval of a recommendation from the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for a community play scholarship. Hotter Wheel by Miss Tony's, I always wanna say hotter.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I don't care.
I don't, yeah.
I'm so sorry.
I've stuck on the old way, so, anyway, Leslie, I'll let you prevent this next to you, actually, if you'd like.
Sure, um, so Tanya's grant application, item three here. It, uh, is for five hundred dollars, four hundred of that is going to a pottery wheel, so she can teach progress classes. And a hundred of that is going to, uh, marketing for the classes. And so we funded her, actually, for a couple of years now, I remember doing it, and she teaches these classes, and it's open to Bisbee residency. And she provides scholarships and it's a really good art education thing. Any questions?
Pretty straightforward, make a motion.
I move to approve the funding for the grant application, Community Clay Scholarship to Pottery Wheel submitted by Miss Tanya. In the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
Second.
And a motion, second to item three. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. There are none, the ayes have it, so moved. We've gone to four, this will be another approval for a grant application in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Sure, and this one is going to Tamla Turtle. And she has, it's actually a really cool project she's doing where she's gonna have these. Six foot tall, like, six foot six, right, because of. Human forms and she's gonna dress them in outfits based on her original songs and. I don't know if you guys read the example she gave, but she said that. There's a song called Clean and it's based on the copper clean mine and she's gonna have real minerals from her mine involved in this. Costume and there are gonna be three of them, so that's why it's Tamla Turtle, separate.
I thought maybe she was making turtles. Great, uh, why don't you make a motion for that?
Okay. I move to approve the recommendation from Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Tamla Turtle, tripleated. Submitted by Miss Tamla Turtle in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
Second.
And a motion, a second, item four, as agenda side, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. There are none, the ayes have it, so moved, item four passes. Moving on, item five, this is a discussion of political approval of notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-four thirteen. This is repealing ordinance O dash. O dash oh nine oh three. And abolishing the Streets and Infrastructure Committee, amending the zoning code, Article Two, Official Lords Commission, Section two point three. Planning and Zoning Commission, subsection two point three point two, powers and duties. Adding a new subsection G, providing for additional duties, providing for housing impact statement. For zoning code text amendments, providing for repeal and zero vote. So, I brought this forward because, um, basically, not basically, uh, the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. Was a very important committee and it was stood up actually in oh three. Um. It helped us get through a lot of, lot of the. What, oh nine? Oh nine, of oh three, that's all right, oh nine. I was on the council, I was on the council on this afternoon, I came on oh seven. Bear with me, um.
It's been a long week.
Well, no, it's not that, I mean, that's. What happens, okay, so, yeah, so, and, um, oh nine, uh, actually under Mayor Porter at the time, um. We thought. If we could get the one cent cell stacks passed, we could start to work on streets. And so what streets do we work on and what ones are in bad shape, and so, and so on and on, and. Since it really haven't been able to get that much of a, uh, commission together over the last year, I. I looked at the actual ordinance to set it up and, and under the duties and responsibilities. Uh, one is to investigate the current conditions of the streets, well, we know what the condition of the streets are, in fact, the counties. You can go to the county now, they have Jordan, every one of them, that you can actually, it's kind of outdated. Uh, so that's been met, uh, another one is develop and recommend a priorities list of the streets. Uh, they did that, uh, our, our Public Works Department has been following that over the years. Um, taking the worst streets and doing those first and working their way down the list, so. It's basically, they met their goal on that one. Uh, number C was to review and provide recommendations for the best available source of funds. Well, at that point, we didn't have the one cent cell stacks, and so the best available first of fund was to pass that, which it did. And so, and it was just repassed, uh, for, for part of that cell stack. So that's been met, and, and D was to provide recommendations for the most efficient and cost-effective use of equipment. Well, after all these years, we kind of know what the best use of equipment and, and the most efficient way to do it. Um, we have our own, own equipment, we have experience now and so on, so obviously, uh. They met the recommendations that they made on how to, how to move forward. And finally, the last one was, uh, provide other, uh, further recommendations of Mayor Council. Uh, objective on improving the condition of the streets. Well, nothing has come before us as mayor and council for quite a few years in the Streets and Infrastructure, so, now. I also wanna re- recognize that. There's still a need for things to be all brought to, from the public, for it is on Streets and Infrastructure. So I just feel that what you see on that big long dissertation I just gave on the, on the notice of intent was right. Basically, the role, those responsibilities in the planning zone. And the nice part about planning zone is they meet every month, not every three months, and they can easily hear. Any suggestions that come from, uh, from the public, uh, they have publicarians every single time. And anything that happens, they can then bring forward to Public Works, they can bring it forward to Mayor and Council. So I think, uh, that for the most part, the Streets and Infrastructure Committee has met their goals. Uh, they, they've done a lot for us, we've got things a lot better now, and now anything that continues onward can be handled by the, by the planning zone, so. I'd like it to try to take some of the load off of our, our staff and at least have one commission that could roll into, to roll into one. That's my idea. Open for discussion. Sounds like we covered. It's time, that's all. Well, I don't see any other discussion, so, uh, I wouldn't entertain a motion, it's a long one, um. Anybody wants to make that one?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-four dash thirteen, repealing ordinance zero dash. O dash zero nine zero three, abolishing the Streets and Infrastructure Committee. Amending the zoning code, Article Two, Officials, Lords and Commissions, Section two point three. Planning and Zoning Commission, subsection two point three point two. Powers and duties, adding new subsection G, providing for additional duties, providing a housing impact statement. Um, zoning code text amendment, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for several.
Nice. Nice, sir. And, and you wonder why our attorney bill.
Not paid by the word.
Uh, well, we gotta have a little thought here, so, anyway, uh, we have a motion, a second for item five, which is a basically a notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-four thirteen. Uh, is an ordinance, so, uh, we'll roll.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Seward.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, so moved. Thank you, uh, moving on to six, this is another notice of intent to, to adopt an ordinance O dash twenty-four fourteen, this is amending the city code. By repealing chapter seven, building, Article seven point one four, Board of Appeals, and replacing it with a new Article seven point one four. Entitled Building Advisory Board of Appeals. Providing for repeal and conflicting ordinance and all the other good stuff. So, this is another update, go ahead, uh, our, this, our, our building itself.
Uh, building the mayor and council, um. We think the Board of Appeals should consist of members who are qualified by experience and training. To pass judgment on matters pertaining to building construction and are not employees of the jurisdiction. Our billing clause contains suggested requirements for appeal. Board members and all of them recommend technically qualified board members qualified to make sound decisions on knowledge and experience. Making judgments of billing code appeals require familiarity, familiarity with construction and separation from political considerations. And.
Essentially, uh, the, the current, the way it's currently set up. Is that there's a, a Board of Appeals for issues related to. The city's technical codes that you just updated, uh, last meeting. The building code, electrical code, fire code, plumbing code. And right now, that Board of Appeals is the mayor and council. Um, so. What is normally done is that a, a board is set up separate from the mayor and council. That has individuals on that board that have technical expertise, either contractors, architects, engineers. And, and have, that can hear any appeals from those very detailed technical requirements. That are being appealed. Uh, so that's what the, the purpose of this is, is to. Try to consolidate that, take that responsibility away from, from the mayor and council. And create this, uh, appealed board to deal with any of those issues, we don't have a ton of those issues come up. Uh, I don't recall the, the council meeting as a Board of Appeals, um.
We did one.
Once in the last three years. Um, but this would allow for a, a separate board that has that knowledge and understanding of the, the technical requirements. With regard to all those different, um, code provisions.
How do you get, how do you put this board, I mean, where was this board come from?
As provided for in the, in the proposed ordinance, the board would be established, uh, the requirements for the boards. We accept. Applications and I would, uh, pick that.
Is it gonna be a volunteer on the state board, volunteer?
No, it's, it's just like all our other boards and committees, they're all volunteer boards, it's not a paid board, it would be. Set up just someone to have the, the planning zone permission, uh, the R B and things are set up, yes. A central board, uh, the council would appoint, appoint the board members, um.
So, will it likely be checked off and to make sure those people are still willing to participate for about twenty days? Um, to take actions, so, what happens if you have one and then all of a sudden a couple of them aren't available, I mean, how often are they gonna be there? Um, queried, I guess, not for a better term, but make sure that they're still. That's, does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's the process of, in selecting those members. Uh, so they will know what the requirements are for the position, and that will be a, an opportunity as well for counsel to question them with regard to their commitment. As well as, uh, making sure that they, they know what their responsibilities are and that. These are things that have to be done, you know, in order to, that's what the point.
Four, four, four men would be a quorum, so that is all, right?
Yes.
Even, no, seven, only four handed, right? So there is some.
And for example, the. The way we, the way we propose setting this up is very similar to the, the other boards and commissions. And provides for consistent seven members appointed by the mayor with consent approval of council. Uh, qualified in experience and training and pass on matters pertaining to building construction. And are not employees of the, of the city. Uh, that also gives you a, a good separation with regard to the. The, the city takes a position of enforcing the code requirements. And then this board is an independent board that looks at the appeals and the issues raised on the appeals and if they meet the, uh, the appellate requirements. And it also provides all the other requirements, um. That they live within the city of Bisbee, the intent is to have at least three members of the board who are, uh, either an architect and engineer, you know, contractors. Um, and then there's the, the appeals process, just like we have with, with the other boards, we have. Other appeals boards that are required to meet within certain timeframes. And then appointing this new board, that will be. Uh, emphasized in making sure that they understand what their duties and responsibilities are.
I might just say one thing as talking to the other mayors and stuff. This is kind of unusual that. Appeal boards. Come before a political body that have political issues, so. It's hard to be independent when you. Might be friends, or you have political issues, you're trying to be up for reelection, it can be a million different things where. A board that is comprised of. Not only people that probably know more about construction than me, but also don't have some underlying. Problem with, with the political side of it, is probably the better way to go, and that's what. I think is part of what brought, brought this forward, so.
Does anything that has to do with this fire, you're saying you want, uh, board members that are more objective. Um, and experienced to be on this board, but, um. Our current situation with the fire on Main Street, is that a motivation as well as?
No, this, this has been in progress before that, it was already.
Not yet. And although this, this references the fire code, it, there's a specific technical code in the. In that, in those list of technical codes, where you have the building code, electrical code, fire code. That is why that's, that's referenced in there, nothing that happened with the, with the, the Main Street fire. Would be anything that would fall within the curvier of that code. Uh, now, one, one thing that could come up is if moving forward with the, um. You know, if there was an issue moving forward with the rebuilding of the, of those buildings and. How the, the, the technical code is say. Well, the electrical code provides for this, but we think that this is the best way to go about doing it. And it's, the building official says, no, this is what the code says, then they would appeal that to this board. To address that question, that concern. So, with, you know. Not, not that, you know, the council doesn't have the wherewithal to make the decision, but it would be. We think more prudent for individuals who understand building and construction. To be able to process and review those, those requests to have a. Something that is different than what the actual technical code provides.
And just one more question, so will the, will the board, if they meet on a regular day? Right, just one more question. So will the, will the board be there and meet on a regular basis or would you just take a case by case?
It would be as needed, just by case on appeal basis. It's not a board that's gonna have monthly.
Okay, because this is, you know, maybe.
And that's why in in doing the per, you know, recruitment for individuals for the board and stuff, they would they would know that, you know, this is a board that meets on a less individual basis. And that, you know, this is the timeframe for when appeals are made to be able to establish meetings. So you you need to be able to make sure that you're available. There's gonna be just like with any board or commission initially times, you know, not all members are available. But that would be an emphasis that he um may in in doing that preparation for those individuals.
More questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion for item six.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt board and N zero dash two four dash one four amending the city code by repealing chapter seven building Article seven point one four floors of appeal and replacing it with new Article seven point one four entitled Building Advisory Board of Appeals, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve adopt for notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-four fourteen. Go call please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Seward.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. And so move. Thank you all. Um moving on, this is item seven. This is a discussion of possible approval of a cost allocation policy. Something that's been around since what, two thousand and eighteen?
It's been around longer than that. This is what we've been using since twenty eighteen. So um this uh policy describes how the city's internal service parks are distributed across all departments. The internal services are provided by the city manager, finance, city clerk, and then personality, the IP. Uh building, maintenance, and garage. And this distribution method has been used for the past several years with no formal policy in place. One of the city's granting agencies requested our policies when we asked for reimbursement. So this will just um formalize the policy that we're using.
It's that magic little line that everybody has that stuck a few years ago. No one ever explained, you know. What it's what they provide, telling me always the, yeah. What we have to run that, what we have to run that thing. Other questions?
Kelly, can you, uh just in a short, explain what that means? I mean, I understand it, but can you explain it when we say cost alloc- allocation? Is this when how we disperse all the costs associated with different, where do you go to which lines? Is that what this is?
Yeah, we add up all the costs of those departments I I mentioned and then distribute it across all of the city departments. And we base it on basically what we think those departments use as far as services. So um like I said, in in the example, like wastewater, uh they have a three million dollar budget. And so the costs of internal services are distributed to them based on.
What their budget is or their. What their expenses?
Right, just assuming that because they have such a high budget, they're using a lot of those services, right? Use a lot of um IT, you know, all pretty much billing collections, you know, all those things.
And you guys stick with the same policy year after year or it depends on the year?
No, this is what we've been using.
The same policy, even though in a department may have changed with the number of employees, with the number of associated costs has gone up over the years, you stick to the same policy?
It's the same policy, but the this, the costs are distributed based on their expenses. So the expenses of the department go up or down, the internal services costs are gonna go up or down, down depending on that.
So what you're doing then is you're just using a a ten percent across the board for each department?
I mean, that's sort of how the math works out. Um is it not, uh it's ten percent of that department's cost is really, really kind of what it ends up being for everybody. Uh that's, and that's just how the math is coming, is coming out. But what we do is we take the costs of all the departments divided um divided into each department to get their percentage of what the expenses are and then multiply that percentage by the internal service costs. So that's each department's percentage of the of those costs.
Any questions? This is for our bonding people?
Well, Mark Reeder did ask for it back when we were working on the PSPRs. So I had started it at that time, um but then it just never really came up again. And so now with this um the Camp Nakko state court up there has been for our policy.
I wonder why it's had gone. And any other questions? Take a motion on item seven.
I move to approve the city of Bisbee's cost allocation policy.
Second. And motion second to approve the cost analysis of allocation policy. All those in favor standing by by sending a aye.
Ayes.
All those may. Very many of the ayes have it, so move. Senator Kelly, and moving on to item eight, this is a discussion of possible approval to have plastic pools, complete structural repairs in the floor and walls. Uh Public Works Director, this is hopefully the last step we have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh appreciate your time. Uh so this is to, we talked about on the last council meeting uh of the cracks that were found uh from the uh American League detection. Uh we had plastic pools come out while they were already out here doing work. Uh while they're out here, we had them look at it. Uh and um they gave us a quote for nineteen thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars uh with a two-year warranty for their work. Uh and the work will take four to six days, uh and that is roughly about two hundred linear feet of cracks um for the pool. When I asked them to get this, I was for myself expecting a most higher number. Uh so I was uh pleased when I seen this number. Obviously, you know, any number is is high, but when you're looking at a pool of this age with the the amount of the two hundred linear feet of cracks, uh I would expect a little bit higher. But uh this will um, I talked about it last time. The main crack, they'll do a foot wide and they'll cut it out. They'll put rebar in, put five thousand PSI of concrete in there. Uh and then for the smaller ones, they'll do uh V, V cuts and they do the uh the epoxy uh finish in those. And that's not, um, but a lot of council meetings, so.
Just on the floor and walls, yes. Questions?
No question. I don't know if I asked you this more, but without epoxy, kind of like the dam compound.
Yeah, they'll, 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 um, once we fill the pool, they'll keep an eye on it. And if it seems like there is more leaks, they can uh they'll dive down with their equipment and and fill that in with the water in the pool.
So this create any delays in your projected completions?
Since this came forward.
He did say he's gonna pull both of his crews down uh that do this type of work um from Tucson and Phoenix to get this done in four to six days. It's, it's gonna be very close.
Um Mr. Mayor, let, let me clarify. Um I had a posted deadline of April first to get the pool all back together and operable. The pool season actually starts on Memorial Day weekend, which is the end of May. So that gives us two months to operate the pool. Work out any kinks because you never know. And so if it runs over to April third or fourth or fifth, then I'm okay with that because I know that they're fixing something that a couple of months ago we didn't know was a problem.
We met with APS today to deal with the final part of the electric, electrical part. So, yeah, we're pushing the April one, but it won't be long after, but we'll have I'm hoping six weeks of running time to make sure everything is is a hundred percent.
Um and updated for electrical, um we have signed the the last thing we needed for APS to go ahead and and run the the polyface uh to the pool. So they'll be removing the current pole that's there, putting in a new one with the new services that is needed. Uh and that um I've been told is gonna be on time.
We're getting there, guys.
And we have posted for flat currents. So if you know anybody, tend to come on out.
You have a question, just a comment. I think the the four to six days change repair two hundred linear week is actually pretty doggone good. And I'm, I'm surprised by that. I thought it would take longer, but I think that's, that's good. And and yes, the cost, well, any cost is high, it's, it's reasonable.
Yeah. Yeah, uh like I said, he's gonna be pulling both of his crews down. So there's gonna be, I think, six to eight people that are being working on this uh to get it done.
There's still paint to come too.
Yes, yeah, that'll be our job.
You got that over? Okay, never mind. Put that on your list. Anything else? Saying um like motion to prepare the last of cracks in the pool.
I move to approve to have plastic pools, incomplete structural repairs, and full form walls.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the dent from plastic pools and complete structural repairs in the floor and walls. All those in favor, take a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those may. There are not be. All right, uh so, oh, um so fast. I should have, all right. Moving on, item uh, let's see, nine. This is a discussion of possible approval. No, that's it. I'm sorry. I thought that was. No.
I'm.
We are, I said structural repairs. Why is it two?
It was updated. Maybe you're not looking at the, sorry.
Well, I printed it off and it puts you in. Let's move on to number now nine, which I have ten. Okay, this is a discussion of possible approval to enter into a joint grant management agreement.
No, it's Kim Lee Horn.
Okay, I approve. I printed this off. I always print this and not the whole things on my computer. Okay, thank you, guys. Um this is item nine. This is a approval to enter into a preliminary engineering agreement with Kimberly Horn to sign the standard client agreement for professional services for the section of the Bisbee bikeways project. Right, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, now we have some people signed up. Um I'll just still let you decide when you'd like to come up, either on eight, nine or ten. Now my number is all. Which one? Who wants to, who wants to speak on number nine? Anyone?
I will.
All right, that will be your one shot.
Uh, you're with me, everyone? Um you all know me, but I will tell everyone who's watching on Megan's project, you know, urgency by face. Thank you, um Mayor and Council for putting this on the agenda. Actually, I should say, that was worth starting, doing that. Um so this is a big step forward for the project. Um I started this in twenty eighteen. It's twenty twenty-four now. Six years that it's taken to get to this point where we might actually, hopefully tonight, um be able to contract the engineering firm for the planning design. Um so I just wanted to kind of give you guys a reminder that um we did have three hundred and fifty people respond to the survey during the utility study. Sixty-nine percent of them um agreed with the shared use path concept presented in the study. Um just so you're so good about voting for it. Um and there was a question in the study when asked, would you ride a bicycle or walk on state route eighty between historic district and mobile district if the new shared use path was constructed adjacent to SR eighty, SR eighty that made you feel safe and protected from adjacent traffic? Eighty-three point seventy percent answered yes. Um so there is a big majority of people that are in favor of this, gonna make it more safe. And when I was filling out the grant application for this, um we did, we had to see at thirty-five businesses to state that the increased tourist traffic from this could potentially create three hundred and twenty-six new jobs, save one hundred and eighty-two jobs, create five point four million in private investment. So there's a lot of benefits to this. Um it's gonna increase the quality of life. And that, that's just my spiel on this particular agenda item. So, thank you.
Okay, and this to clarify is the section from the Queen Mine down doesn't include the part underneath the C I. Just so I raise that. All right, any other questions? Um now I don't know, I'm like bad brain. You don't see no questions, I'll take a, any motion, please.
I move to approve entering into a preliminary engineering agreement with Kimberly Horn and or Kimberly Horn and sign the standard client agreement for professional services for a section of the Bisbee bike project. Second.
I have a motion and a second for item nine is general, all those in favor, standing by by sending a aye.
Ayes.
All those may. Very none, the ayes have it, so move. We'll move on to item ten. Item ten is approval to enter into a joint grant agreement between the Bisbee Blackways and the city of Bisbee for the EBA, a RPA grant award for the lavender pit, shared use path. It's another federal award. I'm not gonna read all those numbers. So this is the other part of this, am I correct?
Mayor, if I could, yeah, this is, this is one of the requirements of the current EBA grant that we have that there was a the joint grant submission to the city and Bisbee Bikeway. And one of the conditions of the grant is, is because there is a uh dual applicants as part of the grant that we have to provide it to the EBA with a joint manage joint, joint grant management agreement, kind of explaining what the duties and responsibilities of each party that is listed on the grant will have with the grant looking for.
Yeah, so we have ADON involved, we have US involved, and we have bikeways involved. So it's mainly, this is between ADON and us.
This is mainly between us and Bisbee Bikeway. We are the the two, the two organizations that are part of that grant. Um and just like with the Kimberly Horn agreement, these agreements are drafted, prepared, submitted to EDA for their review. They do an initial review and tell us if if this meets the grant requirements or not. Um if not, there's, you know, we've come back and made tweaks and things to address any issues or concerns raised by EDA. EDA is this. And they are good with this. And this is one of the conditions of the grant, and those are not listed in place. This is, this is for four and a half million, yeah.
So is it similar to what we do with Camp Nakko? With kind of the same agreement or a relationship or is this somehow different?
No, it's.
No, it's, it's, it's different. It's very specific to this grant. Because when the grant was applied for, it was applied for with both the city and Bisbee Bikeways as co-applicants. Uh and one of the EBA requirements under their terms and conditions is when you have co-applicants that you have a a joint management agreement detailing out what what each party is going to do. So this has nothing to do with the the amounts of the grant or any expenses and stuff, but it just details out what those duties and responsibilities of the city and duties and responsibilities of Bisbee Bikeway.
This, this clarification, so basically the city manages the fund. The, the disbursement of the finances come from the city, am I correct? Yes. Disbursement, we have to approve, they have to bring us whatever expenses associated with this, and we have to approve it and decide whether to do, is this our role? I just want to make sure it's clarified, that's all.
There's, there's an additional step.
Okay.
Well, this E D A grant is a reimbursement grant.
Uh huh.
So the work is performed to a certain period of time. And then we, uh, file for reimbursement from, well, first we pay the bill to the contractor or contractor.
We pay, we pay, the city does.
Then we apply to E D A for reimbursement for those expenses. So, uh, what, when we were applying for the grant, one of the questions that they asked us was, do you have the cash flow to be able to do a reimbursement type grant, since it's a multimillion dollar grant? So we had to, uh, respond in the affirmative as one of many conditions that there were to receive the book, so. So, um, we will also be managing other aspects of it, uh, in conjunction with Bisbee Bike Ways, but, but yes, uh, we'll, we'll be the fiscal agent.
Can I say something quick? So just to, just so that people understand, when we applied for this grant, um, one of the reasons we got it is because it's a partnership between Bisbee Bike Ways and the city. So the E D A recognized that Bisbee Bike Ways was basically bringing forth a lot, a ton of community support, and so all the letters and the, um, the cash mesh that we were able to produce was a huge reason why we got this grant. Um, so Bisbee Bike Ways has a big stake in, you know, this being successful. And then just to clarify also, um, there is a caveat in the special work conditions that the E D A will, um, give money upfront for the construction. So the, the city does not actually have to provide the construction upfront, the, the fees, uh, the, the E D A has actually given the city the ability to get the money from them directly for that, which is unusual for the E D A. And they made that exception because the city, because of the financial situation, so, um, yeah.
For the Kimberly Horn and all the other stuff, it's a reimbursement.
Bad estimate.
And, and the other administrative costs.
Right.
Okay, and there is a match, which is thirty-two thousand, which.
We pretty much, yeah, have covered that.
Which is pretty cheap for a four and a half.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The, um, we were able to qualify for basically a disadvantaged community. So they have, they're paying ninety-nine point something percent of this, so.
Alrighty, um, anyone else, uh, sign up on the, sign up sheet, if I could say something, we have three minutes. Name and.
Hello.
Molly.
Thank you for your time. Yes, my name is Molly Erica. I'm, uh, local here. I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven. I grew up here. I've been a student of every school in the community. Um, I'm a homeowner and a mother, and also an avid bicyclist, um, who is concerned with, you know, environmental impacts of driving to get groceries and doing errands and stuff like that. Uh, I just have to say, as, as a mom, I have a twenty-three-year-old now. One of his main rules was not to go near the pit, don't ride a bike around the pit, don't walk around the pit. Um, it seems to me to be a death wish, and the bottom line is that people are doing it anyway, and I know you probably know that people have died doing that. Um, so I feel like it's super important to move forward on this. Um, I recently went on a road trip all the way to Montana, and I noticed a couple of the states that I went through really, um, had beautiful paths, and they seem to really value that recreational time. And I know I can say for me, it's been keeping me mentally and physically healthy, um, to be able to do that. And I would be happy to go and do my grocery shopping or do my errands if I were able to come, you know, from my home in Old Bisbee and come out all the way up here, uh, by bike, I would absolutely do it. Um, and also, you know, I, I have family here. My mom used to own a store on, uh, Main Street, the Copper Shop. So I, I really understand the value of tourism in this town and that we need it, but also I just want to make the point that, in my opinion, as someone who grew up here and who lives here now, um, we really need to be considering the core of the community, the health of the community. Um, I believe that having bike paths will benefit the community and, and, you know, for health reasons. But also, there will be a tourism draw. There will be, I mean, you see the people that are coming now with bikes on their vehicles, and those people, I think, would stick around longer and enjoy, you know, exploring town. Um, so I'm, I just really appreciate your time, consideration. I think we need to kind of bring Bisbee up to par with a lot of the rest of the nation, you know, it's just, it would be a great alternative to be able to, to utilize bicycles and non-gas powered transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Melanie, do you want to speak to this one?
Next one, sorry, eleven.
Okay.
I'm holding out.
I'll go. Can I go? You bet, so, next name on the list. That's it. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, attorney, city, uh, manager. I'm going to begin with my first column that I wrote for the Bisbee Observer. There are three Bisbys. There's Tofu Bisby. And Tofu Bisby is Old Bisby, it's liberal, it's L G B Q two, X, Y, and Z. And I think you know what I'm talking about, for the, for those who live in Old Bisby. Then there is Vinison Bisby. We are currently in Vinison. And Vinison leans a little bit right, it's tough, thank Joni Giacovino, and wanted to help tough. And there is, then there is finally, there is Tamale Bisby, which is both, not one, how am I doing my time?
You, you're so good.
That's what I do in my service. And the three, the three really don't talk a lot. And I know this from ten years of teaching at the high school, that there really is somewhat of a disconnect, as Joni is suggesting with a nod of her head. And so why I think this is important and why I, is that my phone? Yeah, it's the mayor saying, get the hell off here right now. I, I think that in term, rather than me looking at this as a moneymaker, and obviously I can see that it's important in terms of the tourism, I think it's a community builder. A community builder. When you get kids mixing with each other, when you get bike riders, I didn't know they were there. I don't know that was there. If you got a, if you could have a bike ride from Old Bisby from the top of the hill all the way down to Nakco, I mean, really, if that could be, obviously, a, a strength, a real strength. And so I would, I'm speaking to number eleven, where you would loosen up, I'm speaking to Mel. Eleven thousand bucks, Mel, loosen it up, and help this happen, because I, I just, uh, I have an e-bike, I don't get it all, all the time. But it, I just think there could be ways that we could improve the, the nature of our community, and even so, those ways might lead to some tourism dollars too. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Tracy? Give me your full name and.
Tracy Shepherd.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council, and, um, I'm here tonight to vocally give my support for the joint grant management agreement between the City of Bisbee and Bisbee Bike Ways. I believe that Bisbee Bike Ways has proven themselves, uh, over and over again to their level of professionalism and competency. And so again, I just want to passionately speak my support of you considering this joint grant management agreement between the City of Bisbee and Bisbee Bike Ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I use the remainder of her time? Go all over. Yeah, now I'm going to open it to us. All right, um, discussion, open discussion.
Um, I think one of the types of tourism that Bisby's really missed to vote on is ecotourism, and this would fall into ecotourism. It would open up a lot of venues, you know, just not only riding the bike, but it, it provides an opportunity for you to see nature along the way as well as doing your shopping. So I think this is going to be a, a very beneficial thing for many people, because there's a lot of people in Bisbee who do not have cars and bicycle as their motor transportation. So I think this is, uh, like Seth said, it will bring our community together in a lot of ways, uh, it will help a lot of people out too.
And also just to clarify, it's not just bikes.
Walking, walking, running.
Yeah.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I just got a quick thought. I'm sure glad that my parents didn't ever tell us to stay away from the pit, because we rode our bikes up and down all the time when we were kids, and it's been here, so. But I'm glad they didn't constrain us to not going everywhere.
Um, what I will put down here is, everybody asks me many times when I'm out as the mayor, what, how to describe Bisby. And I say, well, we're basically a snake that has eaten three mice, okay? Because three, what? Mice, okay? Yeah, because we got, we got kind of a plump hair, clump hair. Well, it's because what is between is just nothing else, state highway. So we are separated by this state highway, um, between basically the three parts of Bisby. And, and to me, it's about bringing the community together in the spec that we actually have another path besides having to deal with ADOT. Okay, and we'll still be parting it off, but it will be ours, and we'll have to, we'll have to keep it up, it'll be our, our responsibility to clean it. So that's why I've been supportive since the start, is that, that actually, and this is the first phase. This is just tying the first, first leg of, of, of a big long leg, uh, so that all those mice are digested and we just have a single snake, okay? Anyway, I know it's terrible, but that's, my head has been worked that way sometimes. I'm not, I'm not a, not even really a, you know, artist, but anyway, so, yeah, that's, uh, I, I'm glad that this is our first section. Um, we'll, we'll show you some of the situations on some of the grants coming up and, and what, uh, we're still got to do to try to make this happen, and the next item will be the next one that, uh, we'll talk about, but, yeah. Uh, I like, oh, yeah.
So this phase, uh, wants to be commended, the is Lowell Bisby.
To, to complete?
Uh, yes, right now we're talking about, uh, well, we're talking about the study, et cetera, so.
What it's, it's not to say, I just want it's actually a construction phase of, from, from the, the mine tour down to Logan. Well, we have to have this done by, when's the money run out again? December twenty-sixth, better be done or we don't get paid. That's all I can say.
The, the construction house will start hopefully by September twenty twenty-five.
And this is going to include lights right around the.
pedestrian level lighting. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll light up the streets, because that's how our street, but anyway, uh, Kimberly Horn will bring, there'll be four phases, they'll be starting to show us their plan when, uh, as it progresses, because we'll just approve that. Anything else? All right, uh, with that, then a motion for item ten.
I move to approve entry into joint grant management agreement between Bisbee Bike Ways and the City of Bisbee for joint management of the E D A, A R P A grant award for the lavender pit shared use path.
A second. I have a motion, a second, to approve the joint grant agreement between Bisbee Bike Ways and the City of Bisbee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. I oppose nay. Very none, the ayes have it, so move. Uh, well, moving on, item eleven, this is a discussion of possible approval of funding of the Bisbee Community Connection, this feasibility study grant match in the amount eleven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. I'm bringing this before him tonight, after meeting with, uh, Megan and the Bisbee Bike Ways team. Um, we wanted to move forward to see if they can put in a grant just to look at the other phases that, that needed to happen. So sure, we can get to Lowell, but then what happens from Lowell, you know, to, to Warren, eventually over to San Jose? We're gonna, we're gonna make this snake a single snake, then we, and, and now we'll all tie all the way down to Nakco. And with, uh, with Camp Nakco down there, it'll even be a, a, a greater way to, to move. So, um, I told them that, well, it's all good and well, but there's going to have to be a, a, a match, this one's going to have a bigger match. And I did suggest that, that a lot of this planning is going to be in the county, because once it leaves Warren, it's all counted, all the way to Nakco. So they stood up and I said, if you can get the county to pitch in two-thirds, and well, I'll, I'll bring it to council for the other third. I said, I'm one vote, all I can do is bring it to everybody and see what the, what the consensus is for this, for, for all seven. So that was my commitment, um, living through my commitment, I hope, Megan. I will bring this to you, uh, I will say I'm supportive of it, because you would have, you have, if you look at this, you'll see that it is a, that we're getting a six hundred and, I got it right here.
Six hundred, one thousand five sixty.
Yeah, so over six hundred thousand dollar grant, and it's going to cost the City of Bisbee eleven thousand. Uh, the county is going to put in twenty-five thousand, that will be the match. So unfortunately, all grants aren't just free money, we have to, uh, pony up some of our own, but that, I think is, this is still a good deal. Melanie, you're signing up for this one, so before opening for discussion, I'll let you speak.
Thank you, Mayor, the E D A and Council. Um, two percent, less than two percent, one point nine percent. For something that you've all agreed is an important thing, and I agree, Joni, the ecotourism, all the trends tourism-wise are leading toward that, and I want to say that, um, I'm speaking to this tonight because it ties in with what the Bisbee Science Exploration and Research Center is doing. We've just applied for a study that will partner along with the one that's being discussed here to look outside of biking and ecotourism. So it's the other parts of ecotourism, feasibility study, uh, that will be, um, available to for-profit and non-profit businesses in the region for ecotourism, but you just can't be two percent.
Open for discussion, the Council, it's, thanks for us, if you want to know. This money will be coming out of the streets and infrastructure.
Okay, you answered the question, though. That was good, you got me.
Oh, no, I'm good.
We'll set up your partner.
Okay, that's the only question I have, so that's good.
Uh, any other questions that, uh, do? Okay, um, make a motion.
I move to approve the funding for the Bisbee Community Connection feasibility study grant match in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
A second. And ninety-five cents. No, 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 you're right, I'm sorry. Why do you need ninety-five cents? I have a, a motion and a second to approve a, a match grant, uh, the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. I oppose nay. Very none, the ayes have it. Now may we move on? Which you're requiring to say for the rest of your.
You're going to say about grass.
All right, um, I think we're on number twelve now, goodness, I got the numbers back. Discussion of possible approval, hold, hold, so intent to adopt, or it's O dash twenty-four fifteen. This is accepting the transfer of real property from southeast Arizona, Revolution Valley, located at one eleven E Street, Bisbee.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, how are you all doing tonight? Uh, what I bring you is much lighter than the rest of the discussion. Uh, this will be the fourth house that we will be doing with step up Bisbee Nakco on the Affordable Housing Program in the Saginaw area. Um, so this is, this is simply the transfer of the property, the which to the city. I can give you an update on the property that we look like we're anywhere from four to eight weeks away from sale of the property. Um, the other thing I have to report to you all is that this is the first three-bedroom, two-bath, um, which is something we know we've been needing. Um, it's coming along, this one's going to be beautiful also. Um, I'm open for any questions.
So this is the fourth in Saginaw, the overall.
Eight.
Yeah, I thought it was nine. Yeah, I thought it was nine.
Maybe, I have to recount them all in my head, apologize.
No, yours, you got it. Uh, open for discussion.
Well, I, I've seen the progress on this place, it's looking great. This being your step up, Naco is doing a great job, great service. So it, it is a win for, for the city and having them involved.
Yep, we're walking away, one house at a time. After the next, wish me to attend the time.
Well, Mayor, if I could, um, just on a, 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 a general note regarding this particular agenda item, uh, this is house number?
Yeah, he's right, it's nine, I, I don't know.
Yes.
Now, after a while, they all run together, but, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of discussion in today's world, not just here in Bisbee, but it could, we could be sitting in any town council anywhere in America and understand that there's a housing crisis. Um, there was an opportunity, um, almost four years ago to start something great, um, and started by volunteer work. Um, it's essentially taken life of its own. Our only, um, frustration, I guess, for lack of a better term, is that we can't be doing more.
Right.
Uh, we are at the limits of our resources and not so much our financial resources, but our human resources. Um, and as we've become more sophisticated at what we're doing with the partnership of Step Up in the city and Southeast Arizona L L C, um, with that, of course, comes a greater level of, of requirements to uh, meet regulations like having a contractor's license and that sort of thing. So what started out as a really good idea entirely with volunteers now requires a level of scrutiny that's actually, we wanted to keep houses at a hundred thousand dollars because we felt that was a, a, a low easy monthly for, uh, a teacher or a healthcare worker, um, or a firefighter, those types of jobs. Um, because the level, the level of regulation and the need to have, uh, more professional level personnel on the job, uh, now the average price of a home is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Still a smoking deal if you look at the real estate listings in Bisbee today. Um, but a little less affordable than what I had hoped originally, but yet, um, you know, the last house we sold, we had to we had three names and a half and we'd have to pull one out. Uh, so there's still demand for them here in Bisbee and, and, and yes, we're we're creating affordable housing, one house at a time, uh, and it's frustratingly slow, but it is working. Um, we're, you know, and, and of course simultaneously, we are working at an opportunity to improve rental properties at the same time. Um, but as, as we're finding out with the Hillcrest building, a much, much higher level of scrutiny and higher level of regulations that we have to meet where we need to be, um, on that, so that's taking longer than we, what we had hoped, so. But we're gonna get there, um, and maybe that year is this year. Um, so, um, I, I just, I, I just kind of feel like from time to time, we need to put it out there that, yes, we, we, there is a problem. We recognize the problem exists, we're doing what we can humanly do, uh, at this point, uh, and and by the way, um, between Melissa and Danielle and myself and the mayor, we do a hell of a lot of lobbying at the state level, uh, with the Housing Department and Governor's Office and the Legislature to try to get them to see that what we do works and that they could help us. And, and I feel optimistic that day will come, it's just, it's not today. Um, but I think at some point, so everybody who's come down and looked at our program really likes it. Um, we just need to get somebody in the legislature to act, actually put some money where it works. And so we'll keep pressing on and hopefully we'll hit the right button at some point and be able to move forward more quickly.
Yeah, thank you, and, and let me add that we have been asked to speak numerous places, we have a new request in New Mexico, we don't know that we're gonna do it yet, but but the fact that we've developed a formula that works that can be applied, I mean, I think that's the important thing. And then the last piece that I'll say about that is that we keep everything in the city of Bisbee. So this is absolute, absolutely a community effort, um, including the lending and the realtors, we try to work with the banks here, so um, I think that not everyone knows that we truly keep everything, um, in the city. And then the original donator gets a tax break, so there's incentive from a couple of different ways. The last thing I'll say is I don't have an estimate, uh, a realtor's estimate on the house on E Street yet. Just like what Steve said, we expect it to be around one forty.
But three bedroom?
Three bedrooms, two baths, um, and that one, really fabulous, I don't know if I can see that, it's put a back
Great catch.
But it's put a, a, a back deck across the whole back and done some yard work, so, yeah, it's very nice.
All right, um, any other questions from the council? Motion?
I move that wait, approve the notice of intent to adopt or this zero two four fifteen dash twenty four dash fifteen, accepting transfer of real property from southeast Arizona Innovations L L C, located at eleven, one eleven E Street, Bisbee.
I have a motion, a second to approve notice of intent for ordinance O dash twenty four dash fifteen. Brokoff, huh, Brokoff, yeah?
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember So?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
All right, last item on our agenda, uh, for council comments is item thirteen, um, I was requested, uh, and there's been some talk about the grant system and how we get them and do we need more help in that and so on, so I asked, uh, to the department, please, uh, delve into this a bit and make the presentation and I'll open up for discussion amongst all of us, so. We made up some charts over here, so you can see what's been happening over the last time.
I'm gonna, you know, this one, um, but, uh, it doesn't matter what we do here, somebody's not gonna I'll start with this one, Joe, you can see that on there. Yeah, and I'm not entirely sure what the question was, um, but I think it had something to do with, uh, hiring a full-time grant writer. The, I, I think it's first, it's instructive to know what we've been doing, um, so that you can get an idea. Uh, because I'm gonna make a recommendation on that recommendation will be up to you, uh, whether or not you choose to, um, choose to act on it later on, it's up for discussion all night, so what we're doing that. So, um, let, let's focus on a couple of things. Number one, this chart speaks to the last few fiscal years. So roughly, you're just a little bit over one and a half years of calendar time, so since our fiscal year starts on July first, okay, so it says fiscal years twenty three and twenty four, so we're about eight months in now on the second fiscal year, so a little bit over a year and a half. In that period of time, uh, collectively through all city interests, that, let's just put it that way, all city interests, uh, we have been able to amass about twenty one point seven million dollars in grants, okay? That's never been done before. Okay, that's never been done before by a lone win. Okay, in fact, there were a lot of years that I worked here in the first eight years that were so bad that we couldn't get a grant anywhere because they weren't, the federal, the state, they weren't even doing it, okay? Um, so now what changed? Well, what changed was a couple of key pieces of legislation and encounters that were adopted. Um, one, the ARBA bill, um, and the other one, the infrastructure bill, okay? So a lot of this is infrastructure money because it's infrastructure projects. And of course, you can see out of that, and, and I'm sorry, folks, um, but, uh, uh, the first four entries on your, on this chart are most of the money, okay? Although there's a lot of stuff here, okay, so the two big grants were the multi-use path, which you've considered several pieces of legislation on tonight, uh, and, and the other two big grants were Camp Naco, okay? Um, so how did we do all of this? Well, a lot of this, and, and Megan was very eloquent tonight talking about uh, her journey through the process, uh, starting in twenty eighteen, I believe, and culminating in receiving two grants in, uh, about eight and a half million dollars, okay? So, um, you know, in fact, when I was here in twenty nineteen, I was going to meetings when Bill Harmon was still on the staff, and, uh, uh, at that point, it was a lot more of a dream than reality, wasn't it? So, um, so multi-use path ended up being, uh, uh, two grants and we got two sections literally done with those. Um, I'm gonna tell you where it applies, what the match amount is and who the grant writers were, okay? Obviously, Megan's a grant writer for both of those grants. Uh, Camp Naco slash Mellon Foundation Grant, that's a three and a half million grant for Camp Naco uh, that has funded, uh, programming, uh, and employees and some construction. Uh, well, rehabilitation of certain buildings at Camp Naco. The principal grant writers on that were myself, Rebecca Roscoe, and we ran out of space to put John Luther's name. Okay, um, I mean, John Luther's name appears there several places. Um, most of you have never met him, he works, does anything as a grant writer through Local First Arizona. Uh, Local First Arizona has a program that has existed for the last couple of years, uh, well, three years, um, using ARBA money, okay? So they got a federal government contract to put grant writers to work for, um, municipalities and other NGOs, so. We were allowed four grants a year from Local First, uh, last year and a half, John's done four of them for us. Um, at the beginning of this year, I was advised by Local First that we're now eligible to get four more. Okay, so, um, if you have something that you haven't talked about yet, now would be a good time, okay? So the other Camp Naco grant, um, was a little bit different, it says state of Arizona. Um, that's, uh, that's ARBA money, okay? Every governor's office in the nation was awarded millions and millions of dollars of ARBA money and it was, largely discretionary, um, but Governor Ducey was in office when we received this four point six million dollar award, um, and when he left office a couple of months later, there were still several hundreds of millions of dollars left in that, and now. Uh, don't know what sense, but something to consider, um, when we think about what might be the next step. Um, both of those came with no match. Okay, so that's a hundred percent grant funding. Uh, now with that grant, we've also hired people. And so we, and we wrote into the grant application, uh, the hiring of those people so that, because I knew that, you know, this was not gonna be just a programming, uh, type of grant, it was gonna be a construction grant, so we needed construction people. Um, so, so we have stood up the Camp Naco Department, which is in your budget and that's what you'll be considering along the rest of the budget in a few weeks. Okay, so Hillcrest, um, EPA, um, this was an unusual situation too. Um, we were contacted by a company that uh, administers the Brownfields Grant for several towns, including Cochise. Uh, he called us up and he said, um, Hillcrest is eligible for half, half to half million dollars in direct assistance from the EPA, that's, that's not usual, that's, that's well, usually it has to come through the state, uh, to, to the cities, and so, uh, so I asked Melissa to get with, uh, to Brownfield people and apply this grant, which we weren't awarded, and that is the grant we'll be using to clean out the Hillcrest building, uh, all these asbestos and that will come out of there, we'll still have some money left uh, when we get done with that based on contracts sort of replaced today. Um, but what we will be doing is, uh, going back to the EPA and asking what other eligible, uh, improvements can be made to that property with that grant line. What we'd like is windows, I don't know that that's gonna happen, but we're, does their task. Um, and that will make that building actually more valuable for sale at the same time. When you see, you know, three hundred, two hundred, a thousand dollars worth of worth of asbestos cleaning up, uh, that's, that's a real cost to develop it. Um, and then, uh, the, the next one on the list is a police equipment grant. Uh, that was forwarded by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Chief?
One three?
Yeah, one three?
Dima.
Dima, sorry, uh, Chief Cox is, is, is a diamond interrupt. We did know when he came to work for us that he had a gift for applying for grants and over the four fighters he worked for, he's managed to get a few, uh, but never one over a million dollars. So, um, I know it's chief. And, and chief, in, in fifteen seconds or less, that one, what you're gonna grant will buy?
Uh, nineteen new mobile radio systems so we can communicate with all primary law enforcement agents, citizens, the left and police vehicles, uh, stop sticks, cover something forty two thousand dollars in overtime and purchase all new computer systems through the in-car computer, uh, network.
Yes.
Five year. It's a five-year grant.
Yes, and that came because, uh, Chief Cox and all of his uh, fellow chiefs and coaches coming to reveal a fund new governor, uh, to, uh, help us secure board. And so she came back three months later and, uh, found a way to fund each of our border uh, police departments and the sheriff's office with the equipment that we need to actually do the job that needs to be done. So, so that's that one. Uh, Counter Street Engineering, um, it's, uh, that, this is technically a bridge project. Um, most of us know that, uh, Counter Street, which is behind the library, more than between uh, the library and the Bisbee parking lot, is actually a drainage way uh, supported by mining chipper and a few steel beams works to help, and, and has long since, uh, outlived a useful life. Um, again, this was a grant that, uh, uh, John Luther from Local First Arizona uh, wrote for us with the assistance of Matt and Logan, okay? I don't know whether it was more Matt or more Logan, but, uh, they're public work staff. Uh, this required, uh, uh, an approval by the State Transportation Board, which we got about eight months ago. Uh, and we are in the process, uh, and now the manuals here, uh, the manual is getting it from the award face to the actual engineering face for us. Okay, uh, Solar City Ball, this is, this is a success story and failure all in the same, in the same whack. Um, we applied for, uh, and again, John Luther from Local First was our grant writer on this one, um, uh, USDA was offering solar systems and so we applied for one for the new city hall, okay? Uh, Albert Hopper, before he passed away, was able to design a system for us. I'd estimate it costs that system at three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we were awarded approximately, um, two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars of that, which left us, uh, with a thirty five thousand dollar match, okay? Uh, and I think you all know that since that time, uh, the person who uh, awarded us the grant at USDA, left the agency, went to work for EDA, now he's working working on the bike way, uh, with Megan, and, uh, uh, the people who came in to replace him had basically said, well, you, you, you got a hundred thousand dollars, that's good enough. So we're kind of stuck in between rocking hard place on that when we don't know the way out yet. Um, but I'm pretty sure we'll find one fairly soon. Uh, we have since, uh, it can help on certain individuals who work for USDA to help us find a way to get the rest of the money we need to do that project. Now, good news is it's a separate project from the city hall. Uh, I separated it specifically because we're building city hall with all local funds and so this is all federal funds and I didn't want, I didn't And so this is all federal funds and I didn't want, I didn't want to mix the two. Because then different federal rules were coming into play for the construction of city hall, I didn't want that because we dealing with this project, three, four hundred thousand dollars now. So, um, so we're still working on that one, uh, as you can see it's on there because I haven't given up. Um, so the next project is owner occupied rehab. Uh, this is, uh, CDG money, um, this is not our formula money, this is other money that's available to us. Um, and, uh, what we have been able to do with that money, this is administered by CGO, okay? Uh, Melissa was the grant writer on this one. And so what we are doing with this money is we are granting up to fifteen thousand dollars per home to residents of Saginaw, to mostly exterior improvement sort of property, in some cases electrical or other uh, other types of, of, of interior where the need exists. That's an ongoing project right now, uh, I think we're maybe fifty percent of the way done or?
We'll be in about six weeks, yes.
Okay, so, so this is an ongoing project and by the way, um, we're going to find it for more, okay? Uh, it's very popular and we couldn't fund as many people who wanted to be selling. Uh, we'll be getting another round of that same pot of money, uh, sometime later this year.
Yes.
And we'll be able to go through the process again and maybe award another ten or fifteen homes. Um, and, uh, I've, I've been saying it, uh, a long year, um, I think, you know, uh, within, within five years, Saginaw's going to be having breaks. There's been so much activity over there, both city sponsored and individual homeowners. You know, it, it's, it's the, the Burger King phenomenon, okay? When, when I was a teenager and, and McDonald's was new, every time a McDonald's went out, Burger King went out across the street. Uh, but, uh, at some of you at the table can relate to that. When, when people see a certain level of rehabilitation, uh, happening in their neighborhood, they almost feel like they have the help, even if it's just a paint their house. So that's been a really, really, uh, big catalyst that I think is going to we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to reach every home in Saginaw because not every homeowner in Saginaw fits the financial profile that was broken. But people who don't fit or maybe have, uh, greater means than those that are benefiting from the program uh, are, are getting the picture that we can all look nicer in Saginaw, we, like I say, uh, have in place. So that's that one, um, Boot Gang and Bridge. This is part of a larger, uh, group of projects that we've been working on now, uh, for five or so years and um, most of that's been happening, uh, both, uh, from the grant writing of Dan Mill uh, along with the, uh, capable assistance of Matt and Logan and Public Works. There are several bridges that you know, especially if you were one folks, uh, that, that, you know, you, you wonder when you cross them, how much longer they're going to last. Boot Gang is one of them, okay? Uh, so we were awarded, um, one point two million dollars, uh, for that project and if it's not underway yet, that will be soon. Like that?
Yes.
Okay, next one, fuels reduction, uh, another one, uh, this is not the first phase of fuel reduction. Most of you remember earlier phases, um, through, um, uh, what's the name of the organization?
Firewise.
Firewise, thank you very much, I'm getting old. Um, so, uh, those fuel reduction projects have been done various ways over time. Uh, we were able to get a fuel, fuel reduction grant of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And this is being administered, um, by, uh, the fire department, of course, through, uh, the state land department. Okay, state land department has the money, uh, they make the rules, we follow the rules, okay? Um, at first we thought, uh, and we met with, uh, because the prison has a, um, the fire suppression crew, wildfire crew, uh, that you've seen out there in the past years, responding to wildfires in the area. Um, however, this time, uh, they won't be allowed to participate. Now, let's see the impact of that, well, uh, that means we have to hire our contractor instead. Um, I, I don't think it's changed the last couple of years, wildland firefighters across the city, a few dollars an hour for firefighter. Okay, so we're still going to do the program, we're still going to get a lot done, it's going to happen all beyond public land. And, um, we just won't be as much thankful as we, since we've gotten through the earlier fire laws program. But, um, as you know, um, everything Firewise has done in the last five years is, was regrown. And so this is a constant thing, we have to keep doing so. Uh, and, uh, and, and of course, uh, Danielle and several other people up there have been very active in that program and still are. So they've been helping us keep, keep the money coming in. Another one, police miscellaneous and Tim, that two hundred thousand dollar grant was for, on the very bottom? No, the two hundred thousand. It's about two thirds of the way down.
Uh, that's all of our, uh, highway safety grants and stuff like that during government's office.
Yeah, that, that was the governor's office of highway safety.
Yes.
Um, we, there was a lot of years we didn't even apply, uh, for those, those grants and they've been available for a hundred years. Uh, Tim's been very active in giving money over the years, this, this money will use uh, this year or this year he'll want for more money and hopefully this is a success. Fire miscellaneous, uh, Chief, uh, can you take thirteen seconds? That's the, um, the hundred thousand dollars that you got, Danielle, help me find one.
Turnouts, um, well, we got a fifty thousand dollars for turnout through pre-work. Um, the others, fifty, I don't know.
They got some new hoses and?
Oh, that, that was last year, we got a Michael FEMA grant. We just, we just got him on Monday.
Right, when you received him?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the, the dirty ones went to Russia after Saturday's fire and had to things turn out here for Monday.
Yeah.
So, um, one of the things that, and, and, you know, ten years ago, we didn't think as much about it as we do now. Um, you know, turnout here, cut, cut home after fire, uh, with every bad thing uh, that you went into that fire with, okay? Uh, it can be the carcinogen, it can be just garbage, it can be asbestos, it can be all kinds of toxic chemicals. Uh, it can be accelerants, uh, what's important is to get that stuff off and, and get it in our industrial strength washing machines as quickly as we can because we not only don't want in contact with firefighters, we also don't want in contact with anything in the fire station or on, on other equipment, so. Uh, one thing Chief has been doing since he was appointed chief is working our, our systems up so that eventually every single firefighter has at least two sets of turnout here because sometimes we get two fires two days in a row. And so, uh, you know, and when that happens, then the, the, the gear needs to be, needs to be cleaned more frequently. So that's where we're working on that. Uh, the next one, uh, multi-use path feasibility study, uh, we talked about that, uh, just a little bit ago. Um, and I'm using round numbers here, okay, so if I'm a little bit off, it's no big deal. Um, the amount was about six hundred thousand and the match was about thirty-six thousand. Eleven thousand of the bridge council, we just committed to go. So, so we all know what that one's for and, and the importance to the community. Uh, second to the last one is the glass crusher, Matt's been working on this for several years. Um, uh, and Daniel Luccheve has been helping him with that application. We applied last year and failed, and so we reapplied this year and we succeeded. Uh, uh, this is going to take any bit of blast that we get, um, through recycling and it's going to crush it right down to sand. Okay, so, so now, we don't know how much sand this thing's going to make, because we haven't done it. Um, and of course, we intend to use it for our municipal purposes first, but if it turns out that we can crush more sand than we can use them, we also plan to make it available to the community, so. Um, that crusher looking down at public works, uh, and you know you have a good hit?
Uh, once, um, ADQ, uh, it's not quite public yet. Uh, but once it goes public, uh, we'll be bringing it to council for approval to purchase and then we'll order it. Uh, it has to be ordered and we have to get the reimbursement by June. Uh, and then it'll take, I think, about, um, sixteen weeks, once we order it, uh, to receive it.
So this is another reimbursement grant.
Yes.
And so as you can see, you know, the city needs cash flow, um, available at all times for many things, but including some of these grants because we don't get the money until we pay for what we're getting, yeah. So, and the last one, this is a recent grant that, uh, Tim, this was, uh, congratual, steady?
Yes, that was from Senator Kelly.
Yeah, Senator Kelly's office, um, this award, uh, it was for police vehicles and I think maybe some other stuff?
Uh, three fully equipped vehicles, which includes radio, wireless, all the different things.
So when we get the vehicle, we're not going to have to spend any more money off it.
Correct.
Okay, so, and, and by the way, this one hasn't been officially awarded to us yet, but
He put out a press for?
Well, you know, we got an email, so it'll fish a few months, right? Okay, so a couple of things here before I get to the next one. Um, okay, twenty-one point seven billion dollars and with a very, very, very fortunate match number of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Okay, one thing we've been very, I'm, and I'm just going to say fortunate is, and, and as a result of of the two monster federal bills, uh, in the post-COVID era, uh, we've been able to get a lot of this money without having to match. Uh, match the grant, so that, that makes it a lot easier for us. All right, um, second slide. Uh, a couple of these are big dollars, okay? And, uh, and the top two have a story to go along with them, okay? Uh, you know, we've all been able to, um, uh, witness some recent, uh, incidents that have happened in the community that have been showing us not what we didn't already know, but can, but confirmed what we have. And what we have is about hundred and thirty or hundred and forty year old water system. And what we have is a hundred and thirty or hundred and forty year old sewer system, okay? Now, in the early two thousands, um, we were able to replace a lot of the sewer mains, okay, just the main pipes that lead down to a new wastewater treatment plant that was, okay? That's forty million dollar project back in the day. Okay, I don't, I, I'm not sure what that is with inflation, but it's a lot. Um, but that just tells you that since we've already done that huge amount of work, okay? And by the way, that was almost twenty years ago and we've already started to replace worn out systems in the wastewater treatment plant, okay? It's factory, it's got machines, machines wear out. So in order to improve our water system, there's what we've estimated over the last five years or so to be about seventy-one and a half million dollars, okay? Um, I can't go into a lot of detail on it, but I, but I will tell you that the twenty-one million dollar matching now is through a partnership with the Arizona Water Company because they have pipes, uh, that are of the same vintage and they need to replace their system too. So in Old Bisbee, we've been operating two separate systems of water pipes. One for the fire protection system in Old Bisbee, then one for our potable water, which are owned by Arizona Water Company. Uh, we are partnering with Arizona Water Company to, to try and make this happen. And that twenty-one million dollars represents their investment in the system, okay? So, um, you know, through mutual need, uh, we've been able to partner with them. There's a lot of different things, a lot of different things at play here, Mayor is there. Um, not the least of which, you know, we're applying with the, for the, the, the water system money is through DEMA which is the state agency of FEMA, uh, and you would think that they would grant us a little bit more money for a little bit better fire protection, but they won't. Okay, so somewhere out there in our future, we still have to find a way, uh, to put at least a couple of dozen fire hives in the system in a few places in Old Bisbee so that they're available for fire trucks to hook up, okay? The fire on Main Street the other day, uh, you know, the local fire trucks with Bisbee Water System in order to tackle the Bisbee Water System, uh, we had to relay a four inch line from Arizona Water Hydrant located at the bottom of Old Pay Street, okay? That's a fair distance from Old Pay Street to the fire when you try and move water, okay? Um, so, uh, this is not, this does not solve a whole problem. Um, but it is the problem we're working on right now. Um, and, uh, and again, uh, grant writer Danielle, uh, everybody in public works is working on this, the mayor's working on this. And, uh, so, uh, so basically it's, it's, it's a team. The sewer lateral project is kind of unknown right now, but based on what we know, it's going to be a fifty million dollar project. This gets from your house to the sewer, okay? Um, that's a lot of little pipes, okay? But most of those little pipes are as old as your house, however old your house may be. So there's a, a crying need to do that, uh, that one is a USDA project that we're working on. Uh, both of those projects have been applied and reapplied and reapplied for more than five years. Okay, um, they turn us down, they tell us why they turned us down, so we fix it. We send it back, they turn us down, they tell us why, we fix it, we send it back. Okay, you get pissed, okay? Not easy, okay, um, but we have people that didn't know how to do that and so we're going to go, we're going to keep doing this and we're going to succeed at some point. Um, we have what we call a Bisbee affluent project, this is a partnership between the city, uh, Cochise County and the CCRN, which is the Cochise Conservation Recharge Network, okay? That's a fancy way of saying a group of local governments and NGOs that is trying to bring the water from the aquifer uh, out of your kitchen sink, down your toilet and back into the aquifer, okay? Uh, there's a couple of, uh, recharge points already, in Cochise County. The third one that we're working on right now will go from the Bisbee wastewater treatment plant back down to the San Pedro River. It's a long way off, we're just starting, uh, we've, uh, uh, gotten grants, uh, through the county, not through us uh, to do that, but there will be a point which, there will be a pipe built from here to the river. And that, that will carry our, up next to the river and we will sell that water to the county. We will take the money we sell to the county and we will pay to maintain the pipe, okay? So it's going to be kind of a wash, we hope, in terms of costs. Um, but it will perform an important function, um, and, and, and that is and I, and I'm just going to say this, this is probably my, is that, uh, in San Pedro Basin, uh, we've done a lot in the last twenty-five years to conserve water, uh, and, and because of that, you don't see cracks in the road. You don't see, you don't see land fissures, you see, you know, we're, we still are using more water than we're putting back into the aquifer. But this will help a lot, about two hundred acre feet by year. Okay, uh, next one, uh, senior center solar system, this is really a, this is really a freebie, okay? Uh, ten or twelve years ago, APS put, uh, solar panels up at every elementary school in their service area. And, uh, and when cities asked why, that, we couldn't get one too, uh, they said because we don't, we only like schools. Not even say that. So anyway, uh, they came to me last year and said, find me a city parking lot with at least twenty parking spaces and we'll give you one of these, okay? Well, my first thought, of course, was city hall, but now I have twenty parking spaces at city hall. However, um, the senior center has an abundance of parking facilities. So before the end of the year, we will be getting covered parking at the senior center and then we'll be putting a lot of money back in, into the grid and we will benefit a little bit from that. So, and again, uh, that was an APS, but this is tangible benefit. Uh, the last sidewalk, uh, those of you who've been around a long time Uh the glass sidewalk, uh those who've been around a long time know we've been. Uh the glass sidewalk is a small section of sidewalks on Main Street in front of what we call Fair Building, which is the Bisbee Restoration Museum. Uh at one time, those were beautiful glass cube sidewalks that. Uh not just look pretty from the sidewalk, we can go underneath, they shed light down into the basement space. Let's just say they need a lot of help. Um so uh I was contacted, we've been, we've been working on. The next project on that list with uh the State Historic Preservation Office for SHPO. Uh and they asked me, uh they think they got a little money left before the end of fiscal year that nobody's applying for. So and the local architect, uh Ben Lebly, uh uh had drawn up some plans to do some replacement warehouse sidewalks. So I put them with SHPO and said, let's get it done, so hopefully before the end of the year, we'll get it done. Uh next one, Warren Historic District, um the beautiful pictures that you see. Of the Warren ballpark and uh. The Vista Park from the number seven stack pile, those were pictures that were taken in twenty thirteen. For this application, okay? This application got all the way to um what they call the keeper, the keeper of the National Register of Historic Places. And the keeper had a few questions, and he sent it back to Bisbee, and. Story I hear, so I won't tell any of them, uh it ended up on the shelf in twenty fifteen, okay? So uh it's been sitting on a shelf since twenty fifteen, and when I came back to work in twenty twenty one. Um a couple of my friends in Warren said, when are we gonna do this? And so took a little while to get it started, and I and I didn't have Melissa yet at that point. And so we are now about two thirds of the way. To sending the application back to the keeper, okay? And and plus, we have the benefit of the keeper's comments, so it should be a good application this time, and we've changed. Historic consultants to a consultant that really is working fast, working hard, and appears to know what she's doing. And uh so uh that should be going back a little bit later this year, and I feel very confident in twenty twenty five. The Warren Historic District will be official, that will answer. Part of the money for this, the twenty four thousand dollar match, we've already paid, that came from our ARCA distribution. Uh the rest of it will be grant money uh from SHPO, so uh but we have to move fast because. Uh SHPO hasn't been promised money starting on July first, so we're working really fast. Uh to make sure that we get this, the legislature so far has. Uh uh the 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 bill finance and SHPO for next fiscal year has failed. In the House, now whether it'll wind up with further installation, I don't know, so so we gotta move fast. Uh and then the last one is a fire truck. Uh this this may seem like a reaction. Uh to a recent fire, but really, uh this is uh an annual thing, uh we have a. Um FEMA has what they call the Assistance to Firefighters Program, and it funds fire department equipment all over the country. Which means they get thousands of applications. Uh we did apply for what we call a quint. That's that's a type of ladder truck with an aerial ladder. Um and it was uh uh two years ago, and it was denied. Um the numbers you see before you there are not necessarily the actual numbers for two reasons, number one. Uh after I, after I made this board, Jimmy changed the numbers on it. Um but but we're also looking for a third source of funding. At this point, and we've got until October to find it, so um we we know a truck like that costs about a million and a half. Um the um the city's match is a million dollars in this case. And we've actually now asked for seven hundred thousand from FEMA.
Six hundred.
Six hundred, okay, so I was assuming five hundred when we put this chart together, so it's close, okay? Um the uh and and what's not on there is that. Um the mayor and I have spoken with um two two senate offices, one congressional office, and God knows who else. Uh in the last few weeks, they are inviting us to um to apply for the fire truck through another source of funding. So maybe the pain won't be quite so bad, but it'll still be, if we're successful, we're one hundred thousand.
It'd be twenty five percent, that's.
Twenty five percent, so whatever twenty five percent.
Out of a million and a half.
So, yeah, uh now, we'll turn this one down for that one for sure, uh but we need to know that one first, so.
Yeah, this will come out first, and congressional awards won't come until a year later, so we'll know which way to go.
So now, the average fire truck, unless you are lucky enough to buy one on the shoulder of the floor. And it's not like your local Ford dealer, um typically, they take a year and a half or so to build. Um so if we do get a second grant award, we can always shift gears uh along the way, so. Uh no matter what you do um with apparatus like this, it's very expensive and takes a long time to build, so. And we have been asked, okay, uh in fact, a couple of guys have found me really, really cheap. Uh ladder trucks, um I won't consider them. Any fire truck that's twenty five years old, probably we don't want, okay? Uh so I can use the car and buy.
I already got those.
Yeah, we already got a twenty five year old truck or two, um so now. This is what we've been doing for the last year and a half, okay? Um I added the the fourth column on here to show you who's doing it, okay? Um and we do actually have a a grant writer in the room whose name is not here, and that's just because we had asked her to leave.
Oh, I've been working for Jim.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I mean, I'm writing, I'm writing fire departments.
So um when the mayor asked me for my opinion. Uh hiring a full-time grant writer, I was saying, well. We've done all this, and no extra cost. Now. There's a few of these, we might have been smarter, but there's a few of them where you're really smart, okay? What we're finding out is when you get twenty two million dollars worth of grant money. There's a fair lot of work involved in it, okay? Uh but forget the grant writing, that's already done. Um it's the administration of that grant, it's the construction of that project, it's all that other stuff. Where the work is, okay? Not saying there's no work in grant writing, believe me, uh I spent a whole lot of time on that million grand. Um but do we need a specific grant writer to do that? I think what you're seeing here says no. I think what you're seeing here says the people who are best capable of knowing what needs to be done are the ones doing it. And so, yes, it's a little bit more work for everybody, but keep in mind that. Probably three to four years from now, the level of funding that exists today will be gone.
Yes.
Okay, and don't leave me, leave Melanie, she said yes first. So the question then becomes, then what, okay? Well, we have demonstrated the ability to do this, and and I might add, very well. Um in in what you see here tonight, and my recommendation with council is we can do it that way. Okay, I'm done.
All right, uh I might add a couple of things, one that didn't make it on the chart, and I forgot to mention it to you, was also our electric car third. That was over a half a million dollars that it took the APS put in. I put probably almost two and a half years of of time on that one myself. Um didn't have to write a grant, but we did have to, we had to massage a lot of things for a long time, so that's another. And athlete, we are now selling that good to me, and I think we're gonna come out okay, I sent a lot of cards in there, but again, so. So I think we'll be okay in five years to come through this redress.
Yeah.
Um secondly, just to let you know, um working directly with our with our congressmen and senators. I, you know, that's why we're asking not only for one grant for the fire truck, but but the but a seventy five percent. Uh grant, the way twenty five percent adds would be directly from Kelly and Sima. Um we're, you know, it has to be at the end of the end of the month. And then we're also going, I said, let's go after the wastewater upgrades through through all of it. So we're gonna put that one in also, so those are also in the pipeline, um. Those congressional awards take time, but they they require matches, and. If you look at the other sheet, the four million dollars that we got for bikeways. There's a hundred and eighty million dol- hundred million, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that has to be raised, or else we walk away from four million dollars. So that's one thing everybody's gotta consider, that grant money's not always free. We we go after a lot of the stuff that doesn't have a lot of matches, but you gotta be very careful when you enter into these. Um to realize, and it can't be federal money, it has to come from private sources. So um I'm hoping that somewhere the magic. Ferry will come down, we can find a hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so we don't lose that four hundred four million. To to do the bikeways part into the actual Bisbee, so um. That's one thing I consider, grant writers can rat grant all these, we can get all these, but if we don't have the matching money already built into the budget. Uh we're just wasting our time, so we gotta be pretty picky on that, um. It's up for discussion, I'm gonna open it to to council and and, you know. My biggest thing is I've always asked people that would say, well, why don't you just get a grant? So many people come and say, well, just get a grant through that, you know, and it's like, and I think Megan is sitting right there, and she'll tell you. Managing this grant is nowhere even close to be what you, what I even thought was gonna entail.
No, it's a lot of.
It's a puddle, and and so even if you give that.
Are are easier to manage than others. I think the EDA might be a little more complicated, but.
You're well, they're, each one's got their own, their own complications, you know, so. It grants aren't all just that, oh, good, just look in my pocket, and we can spend it, we have to make it, usually have to match it. And make, most all of them do, and we have to manage it, and so I see magic, I see some. Stuff come up, but then I think, well, who is going to be able, you know, where are we gonna find the money to match it, and where, how are we gonna, how are we gonna administer it? Um yeah, so that's kind of, I'm thinking, you know, I'm over the exception, but that's why I brought it forward, so.
Well, I would say we're very fortunate to have the people that we have around us that are willing to take on the grant writing here in this town. Been very, very lucky with that, and I think, so and so I agree with with Steve about. Uh necessity not to hiring a full-time grant writer because of one main reason is what Melanie says, you know, in three to four years. The, you know, the money is gonna potentially not be there, so.
I think that's a better reason to have one, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Well. I think you're right when it happens.
Right, and I guess, if I, when when the council's done discussing, I'll put my chisels in by then.
I have two. Okay, greedy Jody wants to know how much we didn't get. And secondly, maybe because that time's coming sooner than later, maybe somebody in the office that's already employed. Should be being cross-trained, so when the time comes, when that money runs out, we have a built-in grant writer who's been trained. So we may not have to go out to find someone who learned that on its manual.
That's actually my evil plan for Emmanuel.
I told him, tell Emmanuel.
You don't want it to know yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I agree with Joey, I think we can train someone to take over eventually, I just, I need to express my concern about relying on volunteer grant writers. Because I feel like if they're actually employed by the city, they're more apt to take direction. And not work on, you know, just what they wanna work on. And so that's why I thought it would be good to have someone who's part of those.
And I don't disagree with that, but there's another advantage to some of these. Volunteer grant writers, because they volunteer grant write for other organizations and agencies in town. They support us, we can support them, uh I think all the way around, it it shows much greater, um you know. I hate to say it, community spirit, but it's kind of what it is.
I'm passionate, and these guys, when they do it, I agree with Steve on this, and I think. Be surprised to say that, I think, and Jean and somebody from what Angela Johnny said, it's good, we don't just, you know.
I mean, there might come a day when that's absolutely a necessity, um but uh but I think today's a good day, man.
I agree, I I think that we've done really, really well. Um with the resources that we have, and uh. You know, there's not a whole lot of cities and towns that that can say this, um and. I don't know, I think the expense of having a full-time grant writer right now is not what we need, we already break. You said Emmanuel is gonna be doing that, we have Melissa, she's doing that. And then, of course, Melanie's been doing this for us for many, many years. Um and hopefully she's still up to, you know, we need a part-time. And right to hire her again or.
Her organization is one of those organizations that we need to help support in any way that we can, too. Because what she's doing down there, science that is great.
So I I don't know, I just, I think we're doing, I I think we're on a good path right now.
I mean, I'll I'll make my two bits is that. I think we should build, build into the budget some grant writing money. So that when that special one comes up that we really truly need, um not just, oh, well, gee, I'd like another, you know. Worklist, you know, but maybe something, you know.
Think of something where it's.
Blame vain, baby. That that, well, this one is really, and our volunteers are too busy, we can hire. A a true grant writer, so I'm gonna ask Melanie, ask her to stand up, and part of, part of an issue here, to me, hiring a full-time is what's that gonna cost? Cause let's be honest, we've gone months and months without a community development director trying to find one. We're, it's it's hard to get a a a public works director, so we brought somebody along. So if we can find somebody and bring them along with us, if you go out and find one, are they out there just floating around wanting to work for us here in Bisbee? Full time.
Well, I don't want to answer that yet.
Do you want to, do you want to clarify?
I stay this late because I have a very um strong sense of. Agreement and disagreement. I don't think you need a full-time person right now, but I wanna make it clear that. As these big federal programs start to phase out, the competitive nature of getting big money. Is going to go away, and really, I I I can't speak for any of your grant writers on your list about. How long they can endure these big federal grant writing projects. But eventually they'll stop, either because their pet project was funded, their, you know, I know. Danielle's been working on this water business forever, and I know how tired of it she is. Um but I think there are a couple of things that you really could be working on now. And not have to hire a grant writer per se, but keeping in mind that you are going to need one. And it pays off, it really does pay off. And not that it was any big deal, but in the three years when I worked for the city, I did a lot of the grant writing, and I did six million. Tiny compared to what's going on now, but there were lots of little grants. And that's because I was paid to do it, and it paid off. But the trick to making it pay off now is instead of assigning one person to be the grant writer, which is a huge mistake. Because you get burned out so quickly, and you can't, to have that part of another person's job. Is falling because you can't be bold and diligent about it. Is to do a a team, to have a a team of city workers be the grant writing team. And it's not based on departments, it's based on skill sets. Some people are numbers people, some people are creative writers, some people are logistic, this is the step we need to do. But more than one person should be assigned to that. I think the other thing that has to happen, starting if it hasn't already, because I can't speak to any of these. And we're not including the overhead costs for every one of these projects, all those costs that. All those costs that um we talked about allocating, you know, those indirect or administrative overhead costs. If those aren't being included in every single grant you get, you'll never afford a grant writer, because you can't charge grant writing to the grant. With the rare exception occasionally from. As far as what it costs, my fee hasn't changed since two thousand nine for the city, sixty-five dollars a meal. I don't know what anybody else would charge, but I'm pretty cheap. Not only the fee.
But that's not a dollar. I I'm saying if I had to go out and and hire everybody.
I tell you, the number of accomplished grant writers in this town, I mean, in this room alone, well, she's left now, but there are, there were at least four.
Right.
Accomplished grant writers that each could be paid. You don't have to hire so many, it's a, you hire contracting employees all the time.
Right.
That's why I say, put money in your budget, but not necessarily.
Right. I agree with Steve, you don't need one today, but you should be diligent of working towards budgeting for one in the next, and I wouldn't say four years. I'd say two, it's gonna get all dried up in a couple of years.
A team to do it.
A team, and but you still, even even having someone consult with you to get them going, means custom to do it.
Thank you for that.
Can I say something, too?
Well, you have.
I have to.
I know. As one of our writers.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, I have a couple of them, so I feel like I should express, I have really strong feelings about both sides to this. Um I totally understand Leslie's point in in that there there is um, we are approaching these with our own personal intentions. And some of us, you know, are just focused on these specific projects, and um I agree that it, there are a lot of things that could be done for the city that are not things that I'm focusing on, or that Danielle is focusing on, because we have our specific idea of what we wanna get done. So I agree with Leslie in the sense that um it it could benefit the whole city to have someone who, you know, maybe take suggestions from the public and hears more from the public what they want, see grants go towards. Um the other side of that is that I feel really happy that you guys have been so open-minded with letting me pursue this project, because I know that um you know, I didn't have the experience, but just moving the, you know, basically, you just need to be resourceful, and you can get something like this done. And so I'm I'm appreciative that you guys have allowed me to get to this point. And it is filling what I consider to be a hole in community development. Um so I actually feel like the money that could be spent on a grant writer might be better spent on a community development director. That's my feeling, um and and then Local First does hire, um you know, does pay for grant writers. So you could consider having Local First pay local grant writers to write for the city. And I'm actually a Local First grant writer, and so having the city say to them, hey, we want these local grant writers to get paid through your organization, and one way that you guys could get grant writing, and that people like me who don't have millions of dollars, you know, that are actually, it was a big struggle to get to this point, volunteering this much time. I mean, I had to have my husband was working, otherwise I couldn't have done this. You know, this was a big struggle. I started this in twenty eighteen, so this took a lot of time. And it's not like there wasn't a lot of challenges and things that I had to sacrifice to get to this point. So funding for grant writers, I think, is really important, that you do consider having funding for grant writers, and you don't just rely on volunteers. But maybe you can get Local First to hire local grant writers, such as myself, because then you're keeping the money in the in the city, and you're not hiring someone who's in Phoenix to be your grant writer, so.
Just, just, we do have community development and housing development. So I don't know, when you say we need a community development director, I don't exactly what you're saying.
Well, I wonder, so who is doing communities?
I buy. The one you work.
Man?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a share thing.
Back up for a second, okay, because uh the first time I worked here, we did have actual community development director.
Yeah.
And several employees that worked for him, including Melissa back at that time, part of him. Um and uh and I I mean, it's like I told you, the night before I came back to work, uh a prior city council uh decided that since I wouldn't fire that community development director, they've done it budget. So it went away, and it stayed away until twenty twenty-one when I came back, okay, now. Many of the small communities like us, the community development director is also responsible and correct, you're absolutely right. Um so, you know, if you go like to Wilcox, they have a guy that's there. Um Deputy City Manager slash Community Development Director. In Winslow, where I worked before I retired the first time, um we had a community development director, he was responsible. Even if he didn't write the grants himself, to make sure the grants were written, so, okay? And you're absolutely right, there's a name alongside each and every one of these grants, but there was a team behind that name that made it happen, okay? None of these were a single person writing a grant, again, that's that's guaranteed, though. So, uh you know, but I barely have enough room to put some of these names in here, so. Um so, yeah, um and what we have right now, okay, I've got Emmanuel, and he's working under, under Matt's general direction, but he's also doing the more traditional um functions of a planner, insofar as Planning and Zoning Commission, DRB. Uh soon you'll be, he'll be asking you to start coming to input meetings, because it's time to um update the general plan again next year, is that right? And so he's already working on that, okay? And so when twenty fifteen comes around, we're gonna be doing a lot of work updating the general plan that has to be done by law every ten years, it's time. So he's doing a lot of that. Uh Melissa is our housing expert, so, you know, she only works part-time, okay? I know it doesn't seem like it some days, but she only works part-time, she's always there. But but without Melissa, we wouldn't have gotten half done what we've got done, because of her specialized expertise, okay? So um and then, and then you've got a building inspector, and you've got a code enforcement officer. At some point, what I'm hoping we can do is we can merge that all back where it should be, and have a community development organization together. Right now, we doubt it, because we we cobbled it together based on need, and because when I came back to work in twenty twenty-one, y'all said I could hire a planner, but I didn't have the community development department put that plan, yeah. So, so it's kind of worked over the last three years, it's working, it will be a greater organization. The one thing I can guarantee you is change, and at some point, we'll have to change again.
And maybe we'll have a place where we can put somebody instead of a closet.
We have, we have Planned City Hall also, we can do that now.
So very flawless.
You're right.
I think. You got a question?
Well, yeah, one of the things that's quite obvious from the part I can't see is that we we have reached out to a variety of uh state, federal, uh government uh organizations, uh we have a whole variety of of agencies that we wanna reach out to, to to get the grants, the grants, correct?
Yeah.
And what I'm, my limited much here, is that many grant writers focus in a specific area, okay? Um if we have a single individual doing all the grant writing, we will be looking for individuals that have a variety of various workings within the federal, local, state agencies.
Yeah, and so.
That's a lot to ask.
Well, we put it out there and see who you can hire, but we haven't had a lot of great luck of bringing in experienced people with that kind of experience, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
When we look at, but we only reached out to, wouldn't we want someone, and then if we're looking for someone with that um level of experience, would you be able to go forward?
That's, that's why we have a city manager who brings a budget. It's, it's not gonna be cheap. Most towns our size, with that, just taking that, that community development director, general title, um those salaries are in the eighties and nineties. Plus yours, plus all that. So, Joe.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, I just wanna appreciate Steve giving me the last half hour to go. Part of this presentation on grant writing, and I noticed Mel nodded in the affirmative that, uh, go ahead with that.
Thanks, Mel.
Yeah, thank you, thank you all, just wanted to throw my, just my last two cents in on this is like it was said, in addition to just the the writing for the grants, getting the grants and and managing the grants, it's a huge burden on the finance department. With all of the federal requirements and state requirements for audits and maintaining documents and stuff like that, so. The the more you get, the more the expenses, not just on just the writer, but on all the other departments. And then you have to have legal review the documents, and you don't wanna do that, because that adds another layer. Just thought I'd throw that in the boardroom.
Thanks, Joe. This is just for this guy, and I think I think.
He's looking for a way out.
Thanks. So that's, I I thought it was important to 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 maybe go over what we are doing, and we as a council, and when uh when we have a budget before us, and and we can consider, we can't just do the keyhole effect, we can't look at one little piece of of where where, we gotta look what the whole city can can do, and where the, we can do the most good for the most money that that we have, so. That's where I'd like to leave it right now, and and uh and, you know, I'll I'll speak again, or any of you can speak with the city manager on uh for more detail on what you think he'd like to see in the budget, and then we'll go from here, how's that? All right, with that.
All right, maybe listen to me.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Oh, whoa, whoa, there's, I'm sorry, there is a council, this John.
I will be quick, because I know we all wanna go. But anyway, Joanie is leaving us, so we're rattling over.
Well, we just found out.
And I just wanted to say, Joanie's been an asset to the community on this council. So many people have gone to you for help, and you have always responded. You've been an asset to this council, you're never afraid to ask a hard question. Even if it's a lot of questions about the water, this is a wholesome. But um and also you've been an incredible mentor and a wonderful friend to me. And I'm going to miss you so much, thank you for what you've done here, and Godspeed.
Thanks, Leslie.
Yeah, for sure.
Anyone else like to make a comment? I mean, it's always hard, because we have been a pretty good group here, I think we work well together. Speech-holdiness, and and I'm just hoping that um your replacement will be, I mean, I worked with your mom for plenty of years, that was my mentor. And uh so now, maybe I can end toward your request, I guess. Anyway, good luck on the other side of the thing, I can't follow.
Right.
Okay. Not to say you can't come back there. All right, now, I believe we can.
Say this the whole time.